Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
On this beautiful day in the hour the Lord has made, even though it's hot, we're all here. I'd like to call the regular scheduled meeting for Sumter County Council Tuesday, August 22nd. Mr. Beal, do please give us an indication that we all stand and please be standing for the presentation and the prayer.
Let us pray. After a time of difficulty, we do acknowledge you as the creator of the universe. It is in you that we live, move, and have our being. We ask you, as we begin this meeting, that you would be here, abide with us in spirit, and just bless us that we will be able to approach every agenda item as you would have us to, give us wisdom, knowledge, and understanding to be able to make sound decisions. We ask your blessings upon everyone under the sound of my voice. We ask that you continue to bless our men and women who serve our country in uniform, especially those who are serving in harm's way. We ask that you remember those, the people in Hawaii and everywhere that are in on the paths of the storms that are coming. We know that you're the one who rules the winds and the waters and fire. We just ask that you be with them and help them to be, to find peace in a dark place. As we go through every item, we ask that you stay with us, and at the end of this meeting, take us home to our families where we will find everything well. These are our blessings we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen. Tonight, we'll be led in the presence of allegiance by retired U.S. Air Force veteran, Mr. Harry Bosman. He served our country from January nineteen fifty-four to February nineteen seventy-five. He's a Vietnam veteran, and he is the past commander of DFW Department of Defense.
Present commander.
Sorry?
Present commander.
Present commander. Okay. Sorry about that. You're currently living in County Council District Four. Thank you for your service, sir.
If you all just joined me in pledge allegiance, I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands in the nation under our umbrella and universal with the religion of the God.
This is the ready change to the
There are no changes.
We've moved to the second meeting to approve our agenda for the evening in the discussion. Anywhere in favor, please say aye. All opposed, the agenda has approved. We have a moment to approve our minutes for the past meeting Tuesday, August eighth. Move. It moves to the second meeting to approve our minutes for the meeting Tuesday, August eighth in the discussion. Anywhere in favor, please say aye. The next three items on the agenda are land use matters. I'd like to point out that there will be public hearings on all three of these matters before council takes final action on the second reading. And we'll just go down to the just three hours of twenty-three fifteen, three fifteen East Red Bay Road.
Good evening. Hello, members of the planning staff. RZ twenty-three fifteen, at three fifteen, East Red Bay Road, is a request being brought forward by Duke Energy and Progress LLC. We do have applicant here to speak on behalf of the request. They are the property owners of this fifteen point five ninety three yard that is currently zoning general residential. The request is to rezone this tract to light industrial warehouse. This is the property in question, and you may be more familiar with it as a power substation. It's been this since at least the nineteen eighties. The request to rezone from general residential to light industrial warehouse is in an effort to allow them to replace the existing communications tower on the property. Probably the height of communications towers are limited in residential zoning districts in a manner that they are not in the industrial districts. Additionally, in a general residential zoning district, the setback is based on the height of the tower from the property line, whereas in the industrial districts and in our commercial districts, the setback can be based off of an engineered fall zone. The reason that the current tower does not meet the standard is because its site and location on the property actually predates our current tower regulations, so it's a ground level, not conforming position. The existing development pattern on this particular property really is more consistent with light industrial warehouse zoning, as is the vast majority of development with the exception of one residential neighborhood between this and the neighbor to the north. That particular neighborhood is the only residential development between this and where you get to Charlie's Social Recovery as well as Florence Concrete and Steel on the road. This is what the property looks like today. The power generation or power substation use is not going to change on the property. It will continue to be used the way it is today, and in fact, from a ground level visual appearance, nothing about it will change other than the existing communications tower will be replaced. Kind of puts this into perspective for you, that big triangle that you see, the purple wrap behind it, that's what the hash marks in, is the tract in question. You do have some residential development in the, to the north in an older neighborhood, but the other spots of general residential between it and the purple that you see to the north is currently undeveloped. When we look at rezoning request, we look at what the comprehensive land use plan says. In this particular instance, it is influenced by suburban development planning area as well as a small swath of conservation planning area. The request to rezone the property to the LIW district is consistent with the twenty forty comprehensive plan policies for this area, where we expect in the suburban development planning area to stem mix of uses, where we pay more attention to form and design as opposed to strict separation by zoning district. The planning commission did recommend approval of this request. We do find that the rezoning subject probably to LIW is generally consistent with the comp. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Ms. Rubin, am I correctly saying that the current tower is not up to the standards of modern towers and how it works? If it were to fall, it would fall
It is my understanding that we do have some technical experts here to see better than this, that it has reached the end of its useful life. Those older tower designs were not monopole towers that you see, so they're not designed to collapse on themselves. They're not designed to take care of pre-engineered engineering faults to make them break in a specific way. But again, we do have some technical experts here to answer that.
I just want to make sure public knows that this new tower will be engineered so that it falls
It will fall and break in a specific, in a specific way, yeah.
Correct. Any other questions, Ms. Rubin? Thank you. I now declare the public hearing for RZ twenty-three fifteen. To be opened, anyone wishing to speak for or against RZ twenty-three fifteen, please proceed to the podium, state your name for the record. You have up to three minutes, please.
My name is Gloria Schlemmer-McFadden. Our residence on High Street, this development that being, I developed with the towers. I just have a question, maybe after the meeting or whatever. I want to know, is the tower higher than the ones that we have now that's in collapse? Or is it about the same height or?
Okay, Ms. McFadden, I'll find out for you. Anyone else? Hearing ended. I seen the photo come and close. Approved. It's been moved to property second that we approve second reading for RZ twenty-three fifteen in discussion. Anywhere in favor, please say aye. All opposed, say aye. RZ twenty-three sixteen, sixteen hundred South Pike, please.
RZ twenty-three sixteen, sixteen hundred South Pike East is a request by the property owners to rezone approximately three point six two acres of property from light industrial warehouse to neighborhood commercial. This is the property in question. It is just south of the Shorewood Forest neighborhood, but it is currently the site of an existing church. The use is not proposed to change on this property. The request is coming out of the desire of the church to build a parsonage on the property, which is not allowed by the LIW zoning district. The Revelation Sanctuary Church Ministries will continue to operate on this property. It's got light industrial warehouse zoning to the south and to the west of it, with our mine zoning to the north of it. The reason that they are requesting to rezone to a commercial district as opposed to a residential district is because a commercial district will not negatively impact the developability of the properties immediately to the south. So you'll notice that tract immediately to the south is of a similar size as this particular tract, but if it were to a, a residential zoning district, any development on that property would have a de facto one hundred foot setback, which really makes that southern property not buildable, as with the other parcels, they would also have a one hundred foot setback requirement. The request to vary neighborhood commercial is the least intense commercial district that the property can be rezoned to while still allowing the applicant to do their proposed use, which is the addition of a parsonage. This is what the property looks like today. In the bottom photograph, the area that you see just behind the tree is the approximate location of where they were proposed to construct that new house. When we look at rezoning properties, we look at comprehensive land use plan, and in this particular instance, this is in suburban development planning area. Pike is also a primary commercial corridor and transportation corridor. It's a mix of commercial, industrial, and residential use along Pike. So the request to take this property to neighborhood commercial is generally in line with comprehensive plan. Planning commission did recommend approval of this request, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. We do also have representatives from the church here to speak on behalf of the request.
Thank you, Ms. Rubin. And now declare the public hearing for RZ twenty-three sixteen to be opened. Anyone wishing to speak for or against RZ twenty-three sixteen, please proceed to the podium, state your name for the record. You have up to three minutes. Seeing none, the hearings closed. It's been moved to property second that we have second reading for RZ twenty-three sixteen in the discussion. Anywhere in favor, please say aye. All opposed, say aye. RZ twenty-three twelve, four nineteen and four twenty-nine, South Diner Drive.
This request is being brought forward by Mary Robinson Grayson, the property owner. She is here to see you to speak on behalf of the request. It is rezoned two parcels of land that are approximately point five three acres from general residential to the general commercial. The location is at four nineteen and four twenty-nine, South Diner Drive. You'll see it as one tract here, it's actually two rather small pieces that join together to create this pentagon-like shape. The property remains undeveloped. You'll see that yellow line in the middle, that's actually where the two parcels separate into their own separate tract. As you can see, it's currently zoning general residential. It does apply general commercial to the south with general residential to the north, to the northeast, I guess. The request to rezone the property is in order to market the property so that they can sell it. They recognize that its practicality and usefulness as a residential lot just isn't there for a variety of reasons. And because it is adjacent to a general commercial lot as well as on a primary commercial corridor, being on Diner Drive, is what predicated the request of location. This is one of those requests that generally you will see as saying that the comprehensive plan doesn't align with it, but there are some mitigating factors here. Although leaving the conservation, preservation planning area, which generally does not support what we refuse to do in upzoning, refuse of property to a commercial designation or related to any designation that allows it to be used. In this particular instance, removing an entitlement for de facto residential development on this property actually does for a local goal, which is to mitigate the impact of potential flood damage to dwellings. With the current GR zoning on this property, you'll see that it's actually predominantly in a special flood hazard area, and with the southern part of the property actually being a floodway. Rezoning this property to general commercial actually would remove that automatic entitlement to residential development and allow it to be used for some other use that is less likely to cause loss of life because somebody's sleeping during a flood event. That being said, if the property is successfully rezoned and redeveloped, and this is a specific, it will have to be developed in full compliance with the flood damage prevention ordinance, as we discussed in the previous meeting. From a practicality standpoint, this is probably better served for somebody that's looking at doing a parcel assembly, because there are challenges developing this tract all on its own due to the geometry of the road and floodway placement, but there are big needs to develop under the design ordinance and the flood damage prevention ordinance. With all that being said, the planning commission board did recommend approval of this request. Although rezoning general commercial is generally not supported by the comprehensive plan because of conservation, preservation designation, removing your residential entitlement from this property does for our other local goals. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions, Ms. Rubin? Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
How did the planning commission vote on this issue?
We had three members that voted in opposition and then the rest of the members that were there voted for it, so the motion to recommend approval carried.
Oh, wow.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Rubin. In the public hearing, RZ twenty-three twelve is now open. Anyone wishing to speak for or against rezoning request, please proceed to the podium. State your name for the record, please.
My name is Alontre Grayson. The reason we asked for rezoning was because the property is taped on the road of Gignon, and we figured to resell it, be better to, to zone it commercial and residential, because no one ever built a residence on that particular piece of property. Thank you, Ms. Grayson.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Public hearing is now closed. Second reading? Aye. It's been moved to property second that we approve. Say it, I'm even on RZ twenty-three twelve, in the discussion. Anywhere in favor, please say aye. All opposed? Res zoning request for RZ twenty-three twelve has been approved. We did have a special meeting of Sumter County Council today at five o'clock. All members were present. Council received updates from Mr. Mixon and his staff on the American Rescue Plan Act offer of funds, projects that have been completed, and pending projects that have to be completed by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Council did take action and approved the paving of Cannon Road, Keystone Road, and Josh Wells. That concludes my report. Report from council members on other meetings, trainings, and our conference.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would like to inform that Sumter Branch NAACP is having its monthly membership meeting this Saturday, August twenty-sixth, ten a.m., at the Mount Piscata Church, Highway five twenty-one in Riplet, South Carolina. There will be a panel discussion on rural services to the citizens and the schools. And the panel will consist of NAACP life member, Ms. Call Washington, Ms. Vivian McGaney, Schlemmer-McGane, and yours truly Eugene Payton. And the panel will be moderated by Attorney Andrew Lonnie of the South Carolina Little Defense Agency. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Payton. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Thank you. A couple of things. First, the very, very positive, exciting news I want to share. I have a group of rural folks here today. I call them the Rural Mafia, and they are visiting county council today, most of them in my district, some of them not, but they are folks that are interested in what's going on in rural Sumter County, and they've been Sumter County residents for a very, very long time, and I want to acknowledge them. Ms. Gladys Grant, would you wave your hand, understand, Ms. Grant? Ms. Evelyn Haynesworth? Ms. Ruth McCall? Ms. Bertha Wilson? Ms. Shirley O'Quinn? Ms. Elizabeth Tinsley? And Ms. Ann Meredith? And Ms. Sarah Williams? I want to thank all of them for being here. And Mr. Chairman, I guess you have noticed that there is a big uptick in rural constituent issues as it relates to Sumter County, and I think you're going to see that grow even more. The second thing I want to do is congratulate Councilman Payton on his efforts to really dig into and try to resolve the issue at RE Davis College Preparatory Academy. Let me just say for a second that there are some who feel like school district or school board issues are not county council issues. I am here to tell you they are. We have a responsibility to fund them to some extent. Not only do we have a responsibility to fund them, but when bad things go on in our council districts, for instance, if a school is closed, that affects economic development. It affects whether or not people want to move into that area and send their kids to a school, they may or may not be there. It affects quality of life issues, and that affects Sumter County. So the notion that school district or school board issues don't affect what county council does is just factual. The other piece I would suggest is that as leaders, we have to be concerned about all of Sumter County. And what goes on in my area or in another councilman's area related to something that may be negative, it should be all of our concerns. And so I wanted to make that point. And then lastly, the other observation I have is that when you look at the facilities across Sumter County in the middle and high schools, what you notice is that all of the city middle and high schools have facilities, athletic facilities for their students. It's only the rural schools that don't. In fact, Crestwood, as you are aware, Mr. Chairman, does not have a football stadium on campus. They have a practice deal that they also have to share with the soccer team. So by the time football comes around Friday night, the deal's all chopped up. And RE Davis, same scenario, they don't have that either. Not one of the city schools has that issue. And these are issues that we have to be concerned about, particularly when we identify a school as RE Davis College Preparatory Academy. There's a joke going around in the community that the name was given to the school, but they don't even have things necessary to be called a college preparatory academy. And as leaders, we all have to be concerned about that, whether it's in my district, your district, Mr. Chairman, your district councilman from Highway six three seventy-eight, your district council lady from Chavo. And so I am happy to offer my support to you, councilman, from Myrtle Beach Highway. You will have my full support on that, and I appreciate the work that you are doing in that regard. And Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the comments that we had prior to us coming in today as possible resolution. I appreciate your comments in that regard as well. Mr. Chairman, thank you for my time.
Thank you, Ms. Washington. Anyone else?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to take this opportunity to acknowledge the presence of one of my former colleagues. She worked with me at our university when it was an elementary school as a teacher. She was an excellent teacher, Ms. Gloria Evans back there, and now she is a published author. Would you just wave your hand and let, let us stand? Yes. You know, whenever we, she's a product of the school system. She is an educator that worked, gave her service for many years and affected so many children in our community, and we appreciate the work that she has done. And now being a published author, she's to be commended for that beautiful book that she's written, and we wish her many more successful publications. And I also want to mention during the first meeting tonight, we received wonderful reports, and I am thrilled that some of the projects that were on the list will come to fruition. And it's not because we sat still and did not work. I just want to thank our good folks from Public Works, Ms. Hyatt and Johnny and the team, and also want to thank Mr. Alfred Conyers. You know, sometimes we don't even give them a pat on the back, but, and we are grateful to our county administrator for allowing us to skip by him to go directly to those folks and to, like, when we're in distress, when we have rural roads where they can't get to, and we bring it to their attention, like in the case of a funeral, where the hearse can't even get to the family, and we have to call, those folks, they respond, or maybe a tree might have fallen, they respond, and we are so grateful to the work that you all do every day. I notice Mr. Conyers is not in here with his team, but he has made it possible for some of the rural people who have wells for their water, where their wells have failed, and he has given them some, some information where they could get funding from other sources to have assistance with getting that water, while we are still working and beating the pushes to try to get water expansion to those areas. So I just wanted to express that. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, a few replies. We just, one more second. I overlooked three very important people, Mr. and Mrs. John Culver in the back, they were hiding from me back there, and also Mr. John Rand, who is also in my district and is a really hard community. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes my comments.
Mr. Chairman, let me say this, please. Ever since I've been on county council, I've been a strong advocate of economic development, and everything I try to do is to make life better, because I know that when we invest in ourselves, others will invest in us. That's a saying I came up with in two thousand eleven that was, catch on. But we have to look at the purpose of public education, and that is to build a workforce, to make sure that our students are trained to be able to go into the workforce and provide the services that will attract business and industry to Sumter. So when we fail, when we fail to support public education, we are not only failing those students, we are failing Sumter County. So I just want to make that clear, that I'm going to be forever out there advocating for economic development, and I just want you to join me in that effort, because when we make life better, it's better for everyone. We all grow up, we all come up together. So I just want to thank you. I'm looking at the people here tonight, and I just want to thank you for being here. I'm looking at the people here tonight, and I just want to thank you for being here because that tells me something. That tells me that you can, and God bless you for being here. You would have been.
Okay, monthly course.
Councilmembers, the information concerning the planning department meeting is in the packet as well as the building code's monthly activity report of July 2023. For your information, for those that may not have contacted me, the City of Sumter will have experience there on a reception for the Honorable Anthony Gibson Ward I, Honorable Calvin Hasty Ward III, and Honorable Colin Davis on October 5. And that is going to be held on the 29th at 6:00. And I think I sent that information to you. The Chamber of Commerce will have a state of the economy on August 30th at seven, from 7:30 to 10:30, and if any of the members have changed their mind, but I do have several that have said they will attend, but if anyone else wants to attend, please let me know. Please place on your calendar that the annual firefighter banquet is on Thursday, September 28th, and I ask you to make sure that I'm clearing the calendar for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis. Mr. Mixon.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to thank Councilman Danny for those kind words, and thank county council for your continued support of our teams, our teams, Sumter County. Tonight, you got to see earlier presentation by three of our department heads who have worked tirelessly to support citizens of Sumter County and do so very professionally, and thank you for that public development. Thank you.
If you come down to a public comment portion of our agenda, citizens desiring to speak during public comment are limited for two, three minutes. Comments that were made from the chairman, any questions, they will be answered after the close of our meeting tonight. Public comment portion of our agenda is now open. Anyone wishing to speak, council, please proceed to put your name, put a record, please.
Good evening, my name is Michelle Ross, and there are two things I would like to talk to you about. First, Councilman Payton, your persistence and the importance of education in both for our students and for the community. I lived and taught English literature one year in China, and I saw how an authoritarian government worked. But I also listened to news over my computer and could hear our ratings in education were dropping globally. And one day, I said, okay, there's this authoritarian country, and there is the United States who has the freedom to read the earth. Okay, now, two weeks ago, at the last meeting that we had, Ms. Lottie Spencer spoke about her concern about the community care facility and the danger that she was feeling and her neighbors were feeling by the abandonment of this building. But that night, I also learned for the first time that that building served as a hospital. I'm a folklorist. I teach cultural anthropology at the USC Sumter. And when I heard that, I said, oh my God, this is a historic monument that needs to be honored and remembered and respected for its service to the Sumter community. Now, I know that as it stands right now, it does need to be demolished. It is a threat to that neighborhood. However, I don't know, I don't know how this works, but wouldn't it be cool, like, to save a couple bricks and get a plaque and to say, this building stood from such and such time to such and such time, and it stood as a historic, as a need to the Sumter community that at that time was outcasted? That's it.
Ms. Ross, on personal note, I was voted a community councilor.
I heard that two weeks ago, and that's, you know, that's a big deal. I had, I had a minute left. I talked to a couple of people about, you know, about that. And when I heard that you were born there, and, but also heard that as an MGO, that the building, there isn't much that the city or the county can do to enforce the people who own this building to do anything. So that, that, the community, that baby that was born there deserves more than that. The community deserves more than who's, it's no big problem. And I would really like to see it memorialized in some way.
Thank you, Ms. Ross. Yes, ma'am. Please change your name, put a record.
Good evening, my name is Diane Meyer. I'm here to discuss cost of living adjustment. By definition, it's an increase to help employees maintain the value of their compensation against inflation. On June 13th of this year, county council approved a 3% cost of living adjustment for county employees. And then on the 27th, county council approved those minutes, making that effective 7-1. On June 15th, the item ran an article that was published on the front page above the fold, saying that the county approved a 3% cost of living increase for county employees. I kept looking for my raise. On July 28th, I was contacted by asking some questions, why it wasn't on my pay sub. I was contacted by payroll that told me that raise was for full-time, non-provational employees only. I told her about the article I'd seen in the Sumter item, and she said, we are not responsible for what the item printed. I further emailed my HR person next in line and asked for the policy and/or the rule in writing, and she has since told me there is nothing. She said, the decision comes from the county administrator, Mr. Mixon, who was not in the office at the time. We decided to talk again later next week. On August 10th, I contacted my councilman, Mr. Edens, and then sent him an email in regards to making him basically aware of the COLA that it excluded part-time, and he was not aware of that fact. He forwarded that email to Mr. Mixon, who replied, it is our policy. Sorry, we can't make everyone happy. So now I come before the council, sir, express how I feel unfair and discriminated against because I am a part-time employee. I pay the same price for gas, eggs, as every full-time person that I work with. And I am asking for that council to consider a resolution to include all employees, part-time and full-time, for any future cost of living increases. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Ross.
Hello. My name is Reeve McKee. I live at 412 Sanders Drive, and I'm from the Crosswell neighborhood. However, I know that all our neighborhoods are in the county. I also represent the north side, as well as some other concerns are from the south side. I become the voice. Okay. So therefore, there are some issues that we see, and one of those is, maybe one has been addressed as I spoke with this landing, and it was in regards to the number of ditches along our streets that run out to Pike. They're erected quite frequently. I think maybe 30 years before the pandemic, they were cleaned out. And so therefore, the water that should come out of the woods and into the ditch and go to the tributary area to go out of the community isn't happening. There was wood block in the, I guess, something like a driveway, someone's gone to build a house in the area that they chose not to. And, you know, each time there is maybe a 15-minute pour of rain, the street, the road is filled with water, and you have to split your car down, that's madness. And I can imagine it's probably worse on Pfeiffer and Bagno because of the amount of trash that goes into the drainage. During our most recent cleanup back in June, we were within 65 to 70, 72, cleaning out the ditch. You know, to me, that's shameful. When you see people on trucks and they're cleaning, picking up the trash from our homes that we bagged up, and I say that, you know, it seems like they are not using their time wisely, that they could go down those areas and clean some of the debris. But the thing is, I feel like there has been a unity between the Sumter County as well as the city to try and address the trash issues. However, I do believe that as an educator, more needs to be done to educate the public, and that simply saying, we've got these great buildings, posters that children have done, but it doesn't reach the people it needs to reach. So, you know, I can imagine billboards being up, signs not only in certain communities, but in all the communities, in the convenience stores, the grocery stores, something to try and impact the feelings and emotions of people that they're creating a lot of the problems that we're having for drainage issues in our communities. And so I do hope that you all look at those things and look at ways that you can address them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening.
Evening.
My name is Alain Woodhorne, and I have this, like I have a complaint. I saw a article a couple of weeks ago about the apartments that were being built on Main Street, and I thought, that's nice, but who can afford that? What I could do to businesses that were there? I remember just going there, and there were some of the worst fellows in the borough that was looking for the best service. I could go there and get material, I could get baby products, I could get my shoes fixed, I could get a washer here, all this stuff. And the people there was beauty shops, and all these people that were there were trying to do more with the buildings. They were in bad condition as well. But like I said, we have good service. The people are near you, treated you with respect. Most of them were black. What are they doing? What are they doing now? This past weekend, I got invited out to Prescott Court. I was amazed. I was blown away, thinking about all the money that this country, this county has made off black people from slavery, and we never got to participate in any of it. If we had been able to share and participate in what was going on around us, some of us could be living in Prescott Court too. Some of us could be living on plantations, not only slaves, but we could have shared in what was done in this country. So I'm thinking about gentrification. That's what happens all day. I don't know how many businesses are down there now. I don't go that far. When I came to shop in 82, I didn't go any further than AMR. I was afraid to. I didn't know that much about the area. I couldn't purchase anything at certain stores because of my rent or because of my financial status, whatever it was. I couldn't go everywhere. I couldn't. You couldn't go Broad Street, there was so many restaurants there that the secretary had to take me to for me to get into. That's what I've been looking at, and it's like, I've been looking at all my life, and it just went along with it. I didn't, I wasn't literally equipped to deal with what was going on. I'm old now, and I'm ready to bring our people up to where we need to be. We didn't come here ignorant. We built this country too. We didn't create the industrial revolution, but we participated in it too. And I think it's time we got something for the work that we've done. I want to see my grandchildren, my great grandchildren, and I've got them too. I want to see them look better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Anyone else wishing to speak? See, then public comment portion is closed for gentlemen. It's been moved to public session.